Regular meeting Wednesday, February 21st, 2018. The meeting is being shown live on Channel 9 as we speak and then it's being recorded and it will be shown throughout the week on Channel 9 as well. If anybody's going to record, they just need to let me know. Okay, let's start with place of residence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undebodled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, why don't we start with public input? Why don't you introduce yourself, Andrew, so...
Andrew Lapointe, 2640 Elm Street. I'm from Cable. This week, we were lucky to get our new server in. We've got it all set up and we're all downstairs currently training on it. Unfortunately, we're still a week's away from our switchover and tonight, we've been experiencing some big technical malfunctions which could possibly black us out for programming throughout the week. So if anyone, we just wanted to inform the board and anyone at home, if you're not seeing programming as regularly scheduled, just don't worry. It's, we're just gonna have to live with it for one more week and then you'll get all of our new, our new systems, so...
Well, thanks. You guys are doing a great job down there.
Thank you.
It will be, it will be up on, on the website.
Yeah, it will be on the website.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Why don't we start with town administration?
I have one thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one thing on that, you know, you postponed the land, can I ask where that is?
What are you talking about?
You know, 138 land thing? There's something going on with the land on 138. Do you have that meeting?
You mean our meeting tomorrow?
Yeah. I just want to know where the land is actually.
It's adjacent, it's, so there's the Daddy O's building?
Okay.
It's the old, I'm not gonna say this right, Pevos?
Yeah, Pevos, probably. It's the, where the auction is held.
Okay.
And there's a soccer field there as well.
And this is just, I mean, I hate to bring it up, but is, is anyone, who fixes like the bathroom?
They already, it's already been fixed.
Is it all set?
Taken care of.
All right. Thank you, sir. That was all ahead.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Ferry? No?
Mine.
Okay.
So, back in January, the Board of Selectmen directed me to meet with a couple of health professionals here. Our health agent, Todd Pillings, and our Board of Health Chairman, Tom Pyers. We also added the fire chief to this meeting because he's the emergency management official. And I have submitted to you a memorandum that discusses the recommendations that this small group had about the emergency management, excuse me, the Emergency Preparedness Committee, which is formerly the Disaster Committee. You have changed the name. It's now Emergency Preparedness. So I started with the simplest items first. So the first recommendation was that this committee should be a subcommittee of the Board of Health because it shares a lot of the functions that the Board of Health's required to do and it doesn't really make sense to have double duty, not, that's not coordinated or has a potential to not be coordinated. And then as such, the Board of Health would be tasked with compiling and overseeing the, the budget is called the Disaster Committee Budget. So that currently is under your purview, so you would, if you agree, would need to vote on that. We also recommended that the fire chief remain as the chairman of the Emergency Preparedness Committee. He's the chairman of the disaster, what, what was formerly known as the Disaster Committee, but because the role involves emergency response and incident command, it is logical for him to fill that role as well. We also discussed what the committee would be charged with doing and in light of recent events on the national scale, school security and security of all buildings would be of utmost importance. It is of utmost importance, but, but assessing that security. Also for that, they would issue a report recommending what would, might need to be purchased, whether or not to conduct an active shooter drill, installing cameras, building contained doors, anything that might come across that, out of that brainstorming that that committee would do. And then the committee would also be tasked of a list of potential disasters. This is something that the Board of Health actually has, you know, by their working with FEMA and all of that. So again, that's just sort of another reason why it could come under the Board of Health. And then if the town is lacking in any way, the committee would be tasked with developing an appropriate plan to address such emergencies. And then compiling and maintaining up-to-date contact lists based upon disaster type or emergency type. So that was our brief. We probably spent about two hours. The group recommended that the committee be comprised of five individuals, hold on, one, two, three, four, five individuals and one non-voting liaison. These individuals would be appointed. It would come with the role that they assumed, so it would not be specific to the person, but whoever took over that role, which, and what I mean by that is the fire chief, the police chief, the highway superintendent, the Board of Health agent, the Board of Health Chairman, and as a non-voting liaison to the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator. All individuals are appointed and this committee would serve as an extension of their duties in their respective positions. They would be responsible for taking certain trainings, most of which are available online. They're just rather extensive. But a key part of the reasoning by not having an elected official is that come April 8th, for, you know, just, there's not a new set of elected officials that have never set foot, you know?
The only thing I, I think, I think the chairman or whoever the board selects should be an ad hoc member, non-voting, just to be aware of, of what's going on. I mean, I've expressed that before, but, so I don't know what you have to talk about that.
The Board of Selectmen?
Yeah.
Actually, I feel the chairman of the Board of Selectmen should be actually on the committee.
Yeah. Because I, you know, we...
I think it's good to have the, the town administrator as the liaison, but they're gonna, people are gonna look to the chairman for leadership, even though he's not chairman of this committee.
Yeah. Cause I, yeah, that, that's how I feel about it too, because I think, you know, we're, you know, we're the senior elected officials here and we're responsible for the electorate. And just to be aware of what the preparations are and what's going on, that, that's...
And do you agree, you think on it as a non-voting member or as a voting member?
You know...
I think you should be a voting member. I think that the chairman of the Board of Selectmen should have equal powers. As I say, that's what people are gonna look to for leadership, even though that person is not chair of this committee.
Yeah. I kinda feel the same way. But I mean, I mean, the reality of it is, the, the police chief, the fire chief, the highway superintendent, the Board of Health, they're the ones that are gonna drive the, the process. So I think, I think the, the role of the chairman of the Board of, Board of Selectmen would be, I don't know, just to participate, but not necessarily to...
Okay.
But I, you know, I also think that when you look at the list right now, and I know this could change, either through election or, or resignations or reappointments, whatever, but as it's, is right now, two members are not residents of the town. And if there were a big disaster, they may not be able to get here. So adding a member, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, you've got another person in town. And quite frankly, although they wouldn't be, I would, you know, I would, thinking about this further, if it was a widespread disaster, if you have the chairman of the Board of Selectmen serve as a member and the two selectmen as ad hoc members, because in all honesty, if there's a big disaster, people expect all three selectmen to be involved. But the chairman would serve on the committee as a voting member, okay?
I agree wholeheartedly that should there ever be a disaster in the town or some emergency that all three of you should be there.
Right.
And I think you would be there.
Right.
The point, how I kind of wrapped my mind around this committee was that they were developing plans. The point's well taken though, it's your committee essentially right now. I would just point out that with the chairman of the board being a voting member, that's now six. I don't know if you wanted to add another one to make it an odd number for, for voting purposes.
That's a good question. I don't, you know, I can't see any heavy votes on this, actually.
You'd be there, but you never know.
It's mostly gonna, mostly gonna be input in, do we all think that's a good idea? So I don't know. And who else would you appoint?
He's gonna hate this. The building inspector comes to mind.
That's a thought. If we have, the kind of disaster I was thinking of was something that would be widespread, property damage.
Like a hurricane.
Or a tornado.
Or tornado, right.
How is it like flooding?
Flooding.
Massive flooding.
Yeah.
So he could check, you know, is this building, you know, a facilities person, is this sound?
He's gonna have to be, if there, if there were a widespread event that caused property damage, even a big fire, yeah, he's, he would be...
I think, I think that would be a good recommendation, yeah. You know, I'll tell you what, we had a drill, and I was gonna be, you know, we had a drill today over at the middle school and I wasn't really part of it, but I just went anyway. And it was very, it was very beneficial. And the thing that, that is one of the most important things in these kinds of things, and this is why I think the chair should be involved, we need to limit who talks to the press because otherwise, everybody starts talking and things get confused and stuff. So it was clear this morning at, at, this afternoon at that drill, the police chief is the public information officer who will speak to, to the press. However, I think that, you know, in a disaster, I think the Board of Selectmen doesn't necessarily need to see anything profound, but should at least be present during that process. That's my feeling.
Yeah, I think they add the building, and the chairman of the Board of Selectmen and the building commissioner.
Okay.
I think you got enough. And the whole thing is, and, and have the other two selectmen as non-voting, ad hoc members. You know what? Ad hoc members, but if the chairman is unavailable, then either of them have gotta step up. Like the authority, we have to pay bills and do that kind of stuff. But that way, you've got a group that can do the policy and work on the whole thing. But the, the two other members of the Board of Selectmen will know what's going on, okay? If they, one of them has to step in or both of them have to step, whatever.
And these would be non, so if everybody was capable of, not capable, able to attend, the chairman would be on the board, on the, excuse me, this committee?
Right.
And the other two would just be in attendance?
To get, to know what's going on and what...
Am I still serving as a, not voting?
Yeah, I think you should, I think that's, I just wanna add, I just wanna add the ones, yeah, I don't wanna change the ones you got.
And I, I think seven is a manageable number for voting. I think that greatly decreases the nineteen and I think that...
And why are you not a voting member?
I'm sorry?
Why are you not a voting member?
Well, because there were five and I would be number six.
Okay. So maybe we should make you number six and me number seven, or the chairman number seven.
And not have the building inspector?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's one way to go. Because I, I think as a town administrator...
I don't need another committee.
Huh? You don't need another?
I don't need another committee. No, I'm fine to be on it. I just, I mean, the building inspector would come up with a degree of expertise that I just don't have.
Yeah.
But I, I mean, I'll do whatever you want. I don't, I'll be on this as a voting member, that's fine.
But why don't we, we wanna...
The concept for a non-voting liaison was to specifically keep you all informed.
Right, right.
But now with the addition of the chairman, I think the whole board...
Yeah. We don't wanna make it, we don't wanna make it unmanageable, let's see other things. But even the ad hoc, I mean, it wouldn't necessarily mean you would go to all the meetings.
No, but you gotta know what's going on.
Right. And so between Mallory, I mean, you come to the meeting, but between Mallory and I, we'd make sure everybody knows what's going on. Because, you know, the reality of it is, when, when you have a disaster or something, the, the, you know, people call everybody, you know, reporters call everybody, whoever they get to speak. So it's important that we're all on the same page, we know who's gonna speak. And I think, you know, sometimes you just can't say, well, I'm gonna refer you to the police chief if he's, if he's not around, you know, so...
And she said today, we're supposed to not say, like, they're not, he's not even supposed to say a lot. But I think that this committee is tasked with a lot of like planning work.
Right.
This is not, just so the public knows, if we had a disaster, it would literally be all hands on deck.
Absolutely, yeah.
We would call everybody. And we did. We had a very large showcase of people today. Everybody came and well done to the Health, Board of Health for organizing that whole thing. But it would be everybody. I just want the public to know that your fate doesn't rest in the seven to nine people.
Heck no. You know, I think, I'm gonna retract what I just said. I think that's the role of the committee to decide those, to talk about those kinds of things. So I'm just, I just like to be, I think the chair should be a participant.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we take this report under advisement so that our colleague, Selectmen Zagrasis, will have a chance to look at it and provide feedback. And we will have this as an agenda item for a future meeting.
Thank you.
I'll step down a second there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mallory. Yeah, I wanna just, I just wanna mention a little bit about the, what did I mention about the drill?
Your meeting.
They had, well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna take something you're about to say. I'm sorry, Mr. Borkin. Do you have something to say?
The only thing I would, can I speak on that?
Yeah.
It was, I wanna concur with Selectmen Blue Light, that I was thinking when we went through some training, it's similar. Even though it's a small town, you still have a, what they call like the federal government, continuity of government.
Oh, absolutely.
So I mean, I think you're aware of that.
Yeah.
You know, God forbid, you never know. We're in, we are also in the flight paths of airports and everything else.
What happens when it's a disaster, you kinda do what you gotta do.
And it doesn't always go the way you think it should, yeah.
Never does.
Thank you.
But anyways, I had to just walk through, if you will, a very short thing at the middle school today. It was like, it was a, it was a medical emergency, like, like a contamination or an epidemic, or an...
Such a state, don't pretend, yeah.
Yeah, I'll pretend, I'll pretend. But, but I just wanna recognize Todd Pillings and Rosalind Grasi who worked for the Board of Health, they're the kind of support staff down there. They did a, the Board of Health did, but they, they did a tremendous job of coordinating this and stepping in and really getting things organized, getting things to, to move along and it was very impressive. So I wanna assure everybody that if there was a disaster, we're in good shape, so...
We all know what to do.
Yeah, so... Okay, thanks. He doesn't ever know what to do.
Okay. Okay, so in your packets, you have quite a bit of information about this town vehicle use policy. And I gave you what is currently the policy out of the policy manual. I gave you what I have drafted and, I'm sorry, I had the draft watermark on here, but it, I don't know what, it's, you can barely see it, but that's probably just a printing issue. And the very last page of this packet is a policy that is ongoing and a good policy in my opinion. It's called the policy regarding the use of hired equipment and it's what Superintendent Ferry uses for snow plowing operators. So I referenced this in this new draft policy, so I just wanted everyone to be able to know what I was talking about when I said that. So I just assumed you would take this under advisement and, and review it.
Yeah, I can, you drove it.
Of cour, yeah, right.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we take the town vehicle use policy under advisement for discussions at future meetings.
I'll step down a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Do you want to write along? Do you have anything else that you wanna?
No, that completes my report, although some of my other stuff a little bit later.
Maybe it's a good thing, talking about emergency preparedness, you know, with the events that occurred in, down in Florida this last week, I think everybody is concerned about school safety and school security and stuff. So I had invited Dr. Azar to come to our meeting. He couldn't make it because he's on vacation, but he did, he sent a letter out to all the parents. I just wanna, it's a little, it's a little long, but I wanna read it so that you can be assured that they're not taking a lackadaisical, lackadaisical approach to, to the situation. So anyway, "Dear parents and guardians, please understand that we are aware of the most recent horrific events which have unfolded in the Florida school district and how these events impact our students' lives. The purpose of this correspondence is to share with you reminders and suggestions that may help ease understandable anxieties in regard to such events. Before-mentioned events pose a reminder to us to review and refresh our safety protocols in each school building. Immediately on, on hearing the news, I reached out to our five building principals to revisit the protocols with their crisis teams and students. In addition, safety measures are constantly being reviewed and updated by our Dayton and Rehoboth Police and Fire Personnel. As with any collaborative effort involving our children, we will best serve our students if we work together in an endeavor for safe environments as a team. We would, we would request that parents continue to be vigilant in monitoring their children's internet use. There are other social media sites. It's imperative that, for parents to encourage their children, if they see or hear something, they say something. The social and emotional well-being of our students depends on us to make school a rewarding experience in which students enjoy coming to school. We want our students to be connected to their schools and to be comfortable and safe when they arrive and when they leave. The following are some ideas to ease anxiety that our children may experience. As you monitor, as you monitor how much, if any, news you're exposing your children, your children to, please keep in mind that they are also cognizant when we as adults are tuned in. Such images understandably heighten concern. They also make it difficult for very young children to distinguish between what they see on news, on news sources and what their personal, and their personal reality. Remain calm and supportive. Children take their cues from their parents, teachers, and adults. Be positive. Be a good listener, observer, pay attention to changes in behavior. Please be mindful of yourself. If we are anxious or upset, our children are more likely to be as well. In conclusion, please let your school principal or council know if, if you have specific concerns about your child. Parents or staff members with concerns about safety should feel, feel the contact, feel free to contact building principals for school-specific questions. Helping to ensure that our students are emotionally safe in relation to news about the shootings is another important responsibility. Please refer to guidance from the American Psychological Association for practical help. And the website is www.apa.org and then you'll have to get into it there. Please write, reach out to any member of the administrative team or your local law enforcement personnel if you can help support in any way. And this is signed by Dr. Azar, Chief Trombetta from the Rehoboth Police Department, Chief McDonald from Dayton, Chief Risi from Rehoboth Fire Department, and Chief McGee from the Dayton Fire Department. So just so you know, they're, they're aware of it. The other, the other thing, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about school safety. I think we all are concerned about school safety, but I wanna, I think with this emergency preparedness committee, I think we're gonna have more discussion about that. You know, we're not gonna discuss it publicly because you just don't do that, but I think we'll probably have an executive session where we get the appropriate players and just to talk about it and what the plans are and how it's going. So, so we all feel comfortable with the effort that is being put out there to protect our, protect our kids, so, thank you. Moving on.
Okay.
Okay, new business. Request to make emergency preparedness committee...
Wait, wait, we skipped old business.
Oh, Jesus, sorry. Skipping along. The Selectmen budget, budget discussion. Now, Mallory and I went through the, the budget, made a fir, a first draft, if you will, and I would, I'd like to take or table this until Selectmen Zagrasis is back, back in the meeting.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would that we take a discussion on the Y-19 budget to a future meeting.
I'll step down a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks. Okay, the next is request to add Rebecca Beach to the staff at primetime. We have a memo from Alice Souza, the Executive Director and the Council on Aging, and it says, "Please find a job description for Rebecca Beach, a primetime employee." This has been approved by the Council on Aging Board Chairman, Thomas Ferry, as well as other board members. Substantial, substantial funds are available. Should you have any questions and need additional information, please feel free to contact me at the above number. And we have a job description. Mr. Ferry is here. I think they, they have money in their budget for this and, and it's a, you feel it's a necessary position.
Yes, it, it's, I realize you guys have tried to act on this last week. Rebecca's been with us for two years already as an employee that she's been funded by system, system by system. Alice, that's the woman, she was, oh, well, she knows she's a great person to keep and the whole board does also. And we just failed the part of properly, the proper procedure of bringing on employee on our payroll. That's part time. So that's the little stamp pool that we had here.
Right.
So this, her funding for system needs to run out because they have to process and new people can be considered for that.
And how many hours is she doing this?
I believe she does not exceed nineteen and a half.
Okay.
Which budget will she be in? Is she on the primetime budget or is the, is it the town budget?
The town budget, which is both revolving fund is the primetime.
Right.
And then the person I run the program over there is on the town budget, the COA.
Okay, so she's on the revolving account budget?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we accept the recommendation of Council on Aging and Mrs. Souza appoint Rebecca Beach to the staff at primetime at nineteen hours a week.
I'll step down a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ferry. Sounds like a very ideal employee. Okay. Next order of business, we have a land donation from the Brodroll family, and this is a letter that they sent to us. On this day, January 30th, 2018, EFTJJ, I don't know what that, Realty Trust, Francis H. Brodvalt and Elaine Brodvalt, I apologize for mispronouncing your name, mispronouncing your name, of 646 Riverview Trace Court, Fort Myers, Florida. Trustees give all right, title, and interest to land in Dayton being lots 15 and 16 on Pleasant Street. And he identifies the parcel. The town, the town of Dayton granted to Francis Brodroll and Elaine Brodvalt, trustees of EFTJJ Realty Trust, lot 15 and 16 on plan of Dayton Rock Park on December 13, 1989. All real estate are paid through February 1st, 2018. This is a couple of very small lots down off of Pleasant Street. I think they're just before the boat ramp area, right in that section.
Are you familiar with this?
I was not aware of this.
Oh, you weren't, yeah.
I'm here to be sure it's, to know if the property...
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we take this under advisement until such time as Mr. Ferry has a chance to locate and check out the properties.
Yeah, so they made, they sent us this picture, but obviously you can't read it. Okay, so we'll deal with it. We'll bring this up again next week. Yes, Mr. Ferry?
Yes, you need to, I just wanna understand your order of receiving. So you would accept it as void and still go up with town meeting for a second?
Can you have to tell me for a second?
Accept it here?
Yeah, okay.
Well, the other thing, I, I think...
You gotta step down a second there. A motion to, to take the under advisement.
Okay, I'll step down a second.
Okay. So part of what, when you get a chance to check this out, we'll need a recommendation from you whether or not a, what's the chapter that you inspect land under? Is it 21? Chapter, you know, you know what I mean? To make sure the land is clean?
Correct.
Okay.
My, my question is only geared towards timing. If this was something you were trying to be on change of laws or if that's...
It will be, yeah, we'll try to be on the end of it.
But we've got time to do that.
Yeah, we'll act on this next week once we get back from you. I mean, the other thing I wanna add to this is Carol Borgard, our assessor, recommends acceptance of it. We sent it to a bunch of different people, different committees, and Tom Pyers, EOH, Northern Planning Board, does not have any, any use for it, but certainly the town should grab it. There is a saying, freedom, free is for me. Might be wishful thinking, but only think of a small bed and breakfast or concom. So it has, might have some future use.
Is the next meeting enough time for you to inspect that or do you need...
Yes, well, at least get, now we know. Yes, well, at least get, now we know.
Yeah, if you, if you find everything okay, we can always vote to accept it, subject to a, what's the chapter? You know, you know what I mean.
I thought it was 17E. Am I making that up?
I'm not sure of the chapter.
But you know what I mean.
We can figure that out, yeah.
And then, and that will have to be done before it goes to town meeting, if it, if it indicates that it should be done.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, so we'll deal with that at a future meeting. I have the letter here, Mr. Ferry, but I think you should come to podium and tell us what you want us to do, yeah, about your vehicle.
Oh, before you do that, we gotta do 6A.
And C, so yes.
I'm sorry.
Actually, A, you might want to do next week, because if you put it under the Board of Health now, you technically might not be able to appoint those and weigh in, so to give Selectmen's Graphus-
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we take item 6A, request to make the emergency preparedness committee a subcommittee of the Board of Health under advisement to a future meeting.
Yeah, I'm kinda looking at the, the package and not looking at the agenda. Apologize for that. Well, can we just need to ratify a decision to install fencing to address this? I'm sorry. I'll step down in a second. All in favor, say aye.
I'm not sure we want him on this committee.
Having a hard time here, keeping my head straight. Okay, I'm good.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries.
Okay, now we're on C.
Okay. This is to ratify a decision to install fencing to address a safety issue on Maris Lane. What this is about, the developer on Maris Lane has, has done some work over there, hasn't completed the work over there, and there's a whole lot of issues around that, but somebody brought it to our attention when you went out there. There's a, there's a pretty significantly deep pit, probably six, six feet at least, maybe seven feet deep. It's not a trench per se, but it's a pit, and somebody could fall into that. So, we asked our building commissioner and Mr. Ferry, and I believe Mr. Ferry went out there and put a fence around it, which I appreciate. Thank you very much.
Is it a permanent fence?
No.
No, we put the orange construction type-
Oh, I know what you mean, okay.
It was, the hole, was a large hole, it did not fall under a violation under the Jackie Law, you know, needing support, and I said, for fence, for police detail. However, it did leave a dangerous situation where the machine was parked with the steep wall, the children in the neighborhood, right, I mean, it was a house less than seventy yards away.
Yeah.
And it was all open, and it was not a stable soil either.
No, I, I walked out there and took two steps and went up the main ankles in mud, so if somebody did fall into it, it'd be very difficult to get out of.
Or type of excavation, contraption.
Did you have the fencing, or did you have to acquire it?
No, we had, we had the fencing, that's our fence, that's there, and a couple of other ones to help support it.
I was just gonna say, if the town, I'm curious, any expense for any of this, that the developer should be contacted and told what he owes the town.
And the planning board is, is dealing with this issue very aggressively right now, because this contractor has not lived up to his end of the bargain. So, the planning board is aware of it, and they're, they're working to do something on it.
I also believe it, it's been floated, the idea to have a meeting specifically about this subject and this development, so.
Okay, I think, with, with who? They're, they're suggesting that?
The, the planning board? I, I think one of the Selectmen's, one of the Selectmen is suggesting it, but part of those quarterly meetings, but, you know, we can't just leave this fencing here forever, so-
No, 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 he's got, we gotta make a resolution.
We need to do something, so.
So, I agree, yeah.
Thanks, Tom.
Did we vote on that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we ratify the decision to install fencing to address safety issues on Maris Lane.
I will step down in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now, we have a request from Mr. Ferry to the Board of Selectmen. By this letter, I respectfully request permission from the Board of Selectmen to register one 2018 351 ton dump truck for use by the Highway Department. Anything to say about that?
Seem to be dominating the discussion here today.
Is this the one that you've got with the annual town meeting?
Yes, this went through the annual town meeting, town vote is aware of it. I'm not sure why we need to ask permission, but-
We'll look into that in the future.
The previous administration per se requested with the insurance company to be aware of this topic transaction, which I do appreciate, but it wasn't a vote at that point, you just needed a letter from the board. Moving forward, especially with the new town administrator, which she's always chasing me on other things, I, I would say, if, if you wanna still, still be aware of-
I think, I think-
When she's not, I am.
I give her credit for chasing you on things, 'cause you know how that goes.
So, I mean, I'm sure the board can still be aware of, maybe going through the town administrator to be aware of a transaction like this with that insurance company, because you are taking, the registration part is, does not cost anything, it's a miserable place, but it does add to the insurance coverage, which that's, you guys manage and need to be aware of, and I need, and all our departments need to appreciate that.
Right.
But it does seem to be encumbrance in actually asking for a vote to register a vehicle that was already approved to buy.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the purpose of that is.
Right.
But I think the reason, I don't know where that came from either, quite frankly, but I think the indication is there is a cost associated with doing it.
Correct.
And the other thing I will point out is that we have a brand-new insurance agent, and it might be good that when that letter is issued, it's gonna state that, you know, the Board of Selectmen approved adding this to the coverage and the policy and all that other good stuff. I think that's what it's about.
So, you're gonna take care of-
So, I feel comfortable going forward, if it's the will of the board, to issue these letters and make sure that our insurance coverage is appropriate, and that all of our assets are covered, if it's okay.
Yeah, and I will also tell you, when we do an insurance review, and we look at what we've got, I used to, I used to do that with the late Mrs. Frederick, and there were times that I would have something, and she'd say, I don't know what that is, or she'd say, what about this thing? And I'd say, I don't know what that is, and then we'd have to go to the department and say, do you still have? And sometimes things, we didn't have things not covered, but we had things on there that we disposed of, and nobody told her, so the entire process hadn't been followed.
I think we ought to look into whether this really needs to come to the board, the board, because-
Right, that's time, time era, the inventory need, like Mrs. Gouat just brought to our attention, was addressed and still is addressed by all the departments annually, in a good, good manner. However, there was a time that we were collecting usable military surplus stuff, and that may have what brought on the rationale of the, the board being more aware of taking on more things on the insurance policy.
Yeah, okay.
I, I sense that's where it came from.
That makes sense, yeah.
But I don't think we need to tie hands with this kinda stuff, so.
I agree, so if you're okay, we'll take care of that going forward.
I, I don't know how you would act on it tonight, either.
Well, since it's on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request to register a 2018, what's the description? I know it's a dump truck.
F-350, one-ton dump.
Yeah, 2018 F-350, one-ton dump, one-ton dump truck.
All unnecessary.
Right.
And, and henceforth, all requests to add or remove vehicles from insurance coverage will be handled between the department head, respective department head, and the town administrator.
I'll step down in a second there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the next order of business, we have a, a letter that we are considering sending to the, to our two representatives, Dr. Shihadad and-
Mark Pachico.
Senator, Senator Mark Pachico. And let me just read what it, what it says, and this is concerning House Bill 3528, an Act Promoting the Proper Disposal of Miniatures. We're talking about miniature-
Nips.
Nips, like a model.
You just said that.
What, nips?
What, what are you?
Nips, to the point.
She knows about them, that's why.
I know, yeah.
There are people, seriously, there are, no, but there are people that when they say, what's a miniature?
Yeah, right.
Those things you trip over on the sidewalk and everywhere else.
So, the letter reads as such, Dear Representative Hadad and Senator Pachico, please allow us this opportunity to express our support for House Bill 3528 referenced above. Currently, this legislation is before the Joint Committee on Telecommunications, Utilities, and Energy. We urge you to support this legislation as an effective means to lessen curbside trash and litter. While people always litter, this bill would incentivize others to collect miniatures and redeem them, effectively pick up trash along our streets. Passage of this bill also supports recycling efforts and encourages a cleaner environment. By voting yes, you will join a long list of supporters across the Commonwealth and make quite an impact on the local communities in your district. We hope that you will vote in favor of this legislation once it comes before the full legislate, legislature. So, it's to be signed by all three Selectmen. Mr. Graphus is not here.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest we, we put this on next week's agenda, so that, if Brett has, you may have some comments or something. Mr. Chairman, I move that the letter of support for the five-cent deposit on miniatures be taken under advisement until next week.
Okay, I'll step down in a second. That motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I just wanna comment, you mean, I think if you ever walk our streets, these nip bottles are everywhere. I mean, it's incredible the number that's thrown out.
As I said, Boston sweeps their streets twice a week, in the, you know, wee hours of the morning. Well, every time I walk up from South Station to Windsor Square to go to MMA, they're there.
Right. Well, you know, on my street, on Wheeler Street, you walk, I cleaned it up last year, and there's literally hundreds and hundreds of these things in a very short, probably a quarter-mile stretch, so it's just-
And Lake and Avenue was terrible.
Yeah, Lake and Avenue, it's a tremendous, tremontous, they're, they're already, but anyways, so, two things, if you, you shouldn't be drinking these in your car, but if you are, don't throw them out the window. Collect them. This bill will give you, I think, a nickel probably, right? Each one? Okay, we digress. Okay, the next thing is an award, network security audit to Terminal Exchange. Why don't you speak to us about it?
I have an update here, I have your path guess, if you wanna go on this one. The first sheet is a summation. Who's gonna give you this? That's for you. Thank you. Okay, so, I don't know how I did this, but the highest priority is actually listed as project three here, so I'm gonna start there. It is the correcting firewall issues for our network.
Am I looking at this, this figure?
Yeah, I'm sorry, this summation sheet.
Okay.
And in your documents that I just handed you is the actual quote for this. This is something, do you-
Do-
No, I just wanna, I just wanna give him this stuff, so he can check out those lots.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
And that might not be the greatest, just because of copying, but we can-
But he can look it up.
Yeah, we can look it up. Okay, so, on this first sheet of summation, I kinda, I summarized everything that we're talking about here. It's three separate projects, so I'm gonna start with project three, with, you just came with us tonight.
Now, Mr. Ferry, could you fix that door tomorrow?
Goodnight, Tom.
I love today. So, this correcting the firewall issues is, we went with our Terminal Services. Terminal IT Consulting is our current vendor handling our network security, and they would charge us $2,115 to take care of some issues that we have. I mean, it's a lot of one-time expenses, and what is most, it's not really the labor that's expensive here, it's the parts. So, the quote is, I handed it to you separately, you don't have this in the packet prepared to you, so this quote's here, and it just itemizes out really the parts, and then the labor is this bottom line. So, it is an expensive fix, but something that is pretty necessary, so I would ask for you to view this as a high priority item.
Do you wanna do these one at the, one at a time, or do them with the package?
I think we ought to do them one at a time.
Before you vote, I do just wanna mention that this fixing the firewall would take place concurrently with what I have listed as project two.
Okay.
Because they're gonna come down here anyway with their labor, and project two is setting up the Old Town Hall with their network connectivity, they're having their own server, it will help the building commissioner do all of his iCloud services that he's got planned out, and this bit of money would come out of his special article.
Okay.
The 4,800. This expenditure, however, does result in an increase of $3,180 to our service contract, and I am working on getting an improved service contract for us. Right now, we're on a real basic plan, and it behooves us to upgrade.
We'll get that into the, next year.
That's for another time, I don't have that quote yet. So, I am okay if you take these two as the other, just because they would be conducted at the same time.
Okay, so the first one is the 6,900?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, I went backwards, and I'm sorry about that.
These two, project two and project three. These two are gonna go together, so the motion would be on those two?
And then the funding, the funding sources are separate. The firewall would not be funded out of the building commissioner's special article, it would, I think it should come out of the professional technical line of the Board of Selectmen's office.
I would agree.
And if not there, the data processing budget.
So, do we have to do anything with the, with the 6,900 at the top?
Yeah, we're gonna do-
You'll get there, but I have some more to say, I just-
We'll do that separately, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that the-
Why would you just say that?
I move that we award the network security audit to Terminal Exchange, project two, Old Town Hall Network Upgrade, at a cost of $4,815, and project three, to correct firewall issues, at a cost of $2,115, for total $6,930.
Should we add on to that, give me the authority to sign these contracts, since there's only one signature on it?
Okay, and that we authorize the Chairman of the Board to sign these contracts.
I'll step down in a second there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay.
Thank you very much. I'm going to, I guess, activate this firewall very quickly.
Yep.
The other project here, so, as I said before, Terminal is our current vendor, so we saw them out to do a complete network security assessment of town, that's townwide, so every building that comes under the town of Dayton umbrella. And I reached out to an additional vendor to basically ensure that their quote to us was in line with what another company would do, and it ended up being cheaper, but if you'd like me to go out for a third, I certainly can.
This is cheaper?
Terminal Services is 6,900, and the other vendor, Unified Network Services, to provide the same townwide network security assessment, was 7,500. And just so the public's aware, what this comes with is an assessment of our equipment, and ensuring that everyone's saving on the server, saving their documents on the server, that our speeds are appropriate for what we need to do here, that everyone is, you know, their machines are secure, the firewall is working, and we're not at risk, so that's what this pays for, that's what this is coming from.
I, I think it would, I think it makes sense to go with Terminal Services, Terminal-
Terminal Exchange.
Terminal Exchange, since they are a vendor right now that we have contract with to, to do our IT work, so I think it makes sense to go with that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the network security audit to Terminal Exchange in total cost of $6,900.
I'll step down in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and again, I was looking for that 6,900 to come out of the professional technical line in the Board of Selectmen's budget.
We have another approved annual network support charges increase, I think we can-
So, that would be tied to your budget discussion, and I just have it here that it is an increase adding what we're go, what we have going on next door, the 3,000, but-
Right, so we'll incorporate it in the budget for discussion next week.
Thank you very much. Sorry I went backwards, that was confusing.
How am I doing?
You're back on track, Jack. You're like that red line train that got off the track and put itself back on and-
Gee, thanks.
Today.
Okay.
Like old trustee, I feel like it's called something, you know?
Thomas the Train?
Maybe, yeah.
Okay, one minute? One minute? Looking for the surplus, click right. Okay, well, the, we have a list of equipment for the cable room, they're, as you heard earlier, they're upgrading their, some of their equipment down there, so they have a, they're gonna get rid of a lot of the, the stuff that's no longer used. Do we need to read all of these, or we can just say?
I would say as presented, and anybody who's interested, I can report it over to them, but they will dispose of in the best interest of the town.
Yeah, probably, some of that, I heard they, they'll put up like on a Craigslist or something like that, because it, some of it does have value. something like that, because it, some of it does have value, it's just not, not much.
I have a question, Dell Desktop, is that a computer?
Yeah, it looks like it, because it comes with a keyboard and a monitor. The monitor is listed further down.
Does, is this equipment going to be wiped before it's let go? I would hope.
Yeah, they, we'll make sure-
The condition of your acceptance-
And there's a laptop up here, any, yeah, any, any, any kind of computer, anything that's got memory needs to be cleaned before it's released, even if it's going to be destroyed.
Absolutely. And I don't know what an RF modulator does, so I would be, anything that has a memory is a good catch-all.
Actually, you know, it's a good idea to take a, take those drives right out of the computers and destroy the drives separately, because, so, maybe we could make that a condition that they do that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the list of surplus, surplus cable equipment for disposal, or recycling, for sale disposal, uh, recycling, as recommended on the list dated 2/21 cable surplus equipment 2018, and we refer this to the Board of, excuse me, to the Finance Committee for final approval.
And do we want to add in there that they destroy the information on the hard drives?
And that, not and that, I'll do a new sentence.
This declaration of surplus is conditional upon-
Yep. Approval of the Finance Committee.
And the removal of the memory.
And removal of destroying the, anything with memory.
Yes. It's not destroying the memory, it's, it's, um-
Erasing.
It's actually clean, it's, it's, it's wiping the memory, it's, 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 I, for, and for the, no, not and, I don't want to, I don't want to add.
I guess, I guess my point is, I would like to see those hard drives removed from those pieces of equipment, because you can wipe a drive, wipe it, but anybody, it's still there, so I would recommend that they be removed.
In addition, in addition, all memory storage in any of this surplus equipment is to be removed and destroyed prior to sale, disposal, disposal or, sale recycle or disposal of said equipment.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, I'll step down in a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now we have another one.
What's that?
Now we have another one.
It looks like we're house cleaning, spring cleaning.
Okay, we have a memorandum from the Treasurer, Mary Hathaway, and it's to the Board of Selectmen. Surplus inventory, I have an old shredder and printer that do not work anymore, and I would like permission to dispose of both of them. Would you please add these two items to the surplus inventory list? Thank you for your consideration in this matter.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant a request to the Town Treasurer to declare surplus and dispose of one old shredder and printer, and that we forward this recommendation to the Finance Committee for final approval.
Okay, step down a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're on the table, the next one, we have an appointment for the Planning Board Office Manager, but they, they haven't made a recommendation to us, they're not ready, so we'll just table that.
They are on, on point, I guess, scheduled to make their recommendation on Friday, so this should show up at our next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table action on appointing a Planning Board Office Manager until a recommendation is received from the Planning Board.
Step down in a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, ratify a police and fire, for the police chief and the fire chief, a memorandum of agreement, and why don't you speak to that?
Sure, so, as part of the policy manual review, something that came up was a condition in each of the chiefs' contracts that really kind of tied their hands for performing duties and, in, in a real-world setting, which would, in their contract, the previous language prevented any non-Dyton personnel from being in their vehicles, but they were granted these vehicles as the town recognizes them as 24/7 employees.
Non-Dyton employees.
What did I say?
Non-Dyton residents.
Oh, I'm so, my gosh, I'm sorry. Non-Dy, we don't want other residents, non-Dyton employees, excuse me, what's happening? So, this just clean-
Yes, yes.
This cleans up that language by just removing in their contracts that one caveat that prevented them from executing their duties in a real-life scenario. But when I was reviewing this, you know, just before the meeting, I noticed another provision that handicaps them a little bit, any, any item that is over $1,000 that they want to buy, so it's one specific item, they have to get Board of Selectmen approval ahead of time. So, I didn't know while we're ratifying and while we're in here, if we wanted to also strike that from the contracts as well. Uni, the municipal modernization bill had increased, I mean, this, this is a Town of Dayton-specific regulation, but the latest legislation has even increased, uh-oh, we have a problem, has, are we okay? Oh.
Those, those are the hard drives?
Oh, great. Is that it? That's it, that's the only one? Did you say you'll take it? So, that's the only one that needs to be scrubbed and destroyed? Okay, well, that's good news.
Yeah, let us, yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see this-
Sure thing.
-stick just with the automobile use and not get, I think, we need to address that, but I'd like to talk a little, or find out a little bit more about it.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, what, what this also does, you know, the fire chief and the police chief are on duty 24/7, so if they go anywhere and they want to take their family with them, it was restricting them from doing that, yet if they get a call, they're on 24/7, so it was really unrealistic, as Maui said, in the real world, so that's what this is about, so.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we ratify the police and fire memorandum of agreements as they relate to use of town vehicles.
Okay, I'll step down in a second, that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. So, what's just happened during all that ruckus was the cable folks showing up with, with the hard drive in question? So, okay, so, we'll leave it to you to destroy it, you know, hit it with a hammer, burn it, whatever, whatever you do in there.
That is the only, that is the only part out of that entire list that holds any memory of some sort at all.
Well, what was the reference to the desktop and the laptop?
Oh, I do have to pull the laptop.
Ah-ha, ah-ha.
There is one on the laptop. Thank you for reminding me.
Have you seen this list, gentlemen?
The desktop, it owns the monitor itself, so there's no actual-
Well, no, there's a, there is a lap, there is a monitor listed separately, there's a Dell desktop with a Dell keyboard.
Yeah, we have two different desktops. That Dell desktop, that is a hard drive to it, that is a hard drive we just pulled.
Oh, okay.
What about the laptop?
The laptop, I will go now, because right after we're done here, then I will destroy that.
Okay, we're good.
Destroy it.
Very responsive, thank you guys. Appreciate it.
So, you have to say until the, I don't know, you might be too young for all this, but, okay, good.
Okay. Okay, so, let's move on to, to the, next thing is appoint Jonathan Gale as a member of the American Disabilities Act Committee. Mr. Gale is, he's our, he is a, professionally, he's a disability consultant, and he's on the Disabilities Commission already. He's also the EEOC officer for the town of Dayton, he was appointed, I think, last week or the week before. So, he's a, he's a very good candidate for this, and we appreciate your, your volunteering to do this, so.
I remember accepting Mr. Maderis's resignation.
Yes.
Did we appoint Mr. Gale?
Yes.
Because this name doesn't look familiar to me.
Uh, we did not, because it was, I had notified you that we had somebody interested, but that his information was forthcoming, I didn't want it before you until we had-
No, we didn't appoint him as any.
Uh, no, but he's looking to be the ADA, on the ADA Committee, he would serve with, with Mr. Maderis, who's already on there, and be appointed as the EEOC officer, which Mr. Maderis did step down from last year.
Okay, I misspoke, sorry.
All right, so, there's two appointments here for Mr. Gale.
Yes, for Mr. Gale.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Jonathan Gale to the Disabilities, the ADA Commission.
And?
I'll do that on separate.
Okay, I'll step down in a second, okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Jonathan Gale, EEOC Officer for the town.
Okay, I'll step down in a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Gale, we appreciate you, your volunteering to do this, I met you at one of the, we did a presentation at the school, and I think you were there with your grandson, so, granddaughter, I'm not sure, but anyways, thank you very much. Very nice gentleman.
I met him as well, I think he'll be a wonderful addition and bring a lot to the table.
Absolutely, really. Okay, do we have a fourth one?
No fourth.
The announcements. Will you do them, some of you do some?
Sure.
Okay, I'll do, trash bags, sharps, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. For more information, call 508-669-6431. There's vacancies on the Development Industrial Commission, the Land Use Committee, the Cultural Council, and the Capital Outlay Committee. The Conservation Commission is also looking for associate members, so if you're interested in any of that, that, we could really use, they could really use some help, so. Dog licenses are available, Mass General Law requires that all dogs six months of age or older be licensed. Applications were included with your census, so please get those back to the Town Clerk's Office. Want to do the next one, Jonathan?
Okay, STEAMposium, S-T-E-A-M, stands for Learning and Careers in the Fields of Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. Dyton Rehoboth Regional High School is hosting an exciting free family event on Saturday, April 7th, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Dyton Rehoboth Regional High School. And the Stormwater Committee for the Town of Dayton is planning to participate in that program along with the Town of Rehoboth, because this is going to be part of our education program about the new requirements for stormwater management in Massachusetts. The Dyton Lions Community Food Bank will be held on February 24th, 2018, at AM, 8:00 a.m. at the lower level Town Hall. Tax forms are available at the library.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we have, we want to acknowledge the building commissioner, I'm going to ask Karen to summarize what, someone came to the office and was very complimentary about something that he started the idea, so I'll let you explain what he said.
Yeah, we had a resident sent a street call, and he just wanted to pass along his thanks and let the Board of Selectmen know that he experienced exceptional service by a town employee last week, being Jim Aggie, our building commissioner. He recently suffered a stroke, and he had come to Town Hall to do some business here, and it was difficult for him to get here, and this business was going to require him to come back to Town Hall to pick up the paperwork, and Jim went by after hours and dropped it off at his home, and he thought that was exceptional and beyond, over and above, and he just wanted to pass that along.
Great, thank you. It's always nice to hear those comments, compliments from residents, so, because we have a lot of good employees here that do their best to make things work, so, thank you, Ms. Aggie, for, for doing that.
He is at a zone, he said he wanted to be here, Mr. Aggie, he was aware of this, but he's at a zoning meeting today.
Right, okay. Do we have any minutes? No? No minutes, okay, we have approval of warrants?
Um, I have a brief Selectmen's report.
I'm sorry. Oh, I do too.
Hey, good thing Brett's not here, because whatever it is, it's catchy. Yesterday, Tom Ferry and I went to a meeting at Mansfield Town Hall, and this was about the stormwater, well, I'll say sort of coalition that Sers, how do you say that?
Sersage.
Sersage has, they're really not into stormwater, they're really into being a purchasing group, but they're looking to expand, and there were, of all the people invited, three communities sent representatives, one was supposed to come, but he got tied up in his own town, so Rantham, Dyton, and Tonton were represented at the meeting, and as was the engineering firm that Sersage does business with. So, there is federal grant money available, and for the first year, it's two and a half million, and for the second year, it's a million and a half. You can only apply for one grant per year, I was hoping we could apply for both of them, but, so anyhow, after the discussion, we were looking for ways to improve water quality, and we're looking at tying this into stormwater, and, because we're all required to do our MS4s and Notice of Intent and everything else related to stormwater. So, it was decided that an initial outline would be submitted to the Funding Authority, and what we are asking them to support is enough money to hire a consultant to do an audit or assessment of every community in Sersage to determine where they are with their stormwater programs. We talked about having an educational program, and, and it was clear, just from the three of us that were there, some didn't have them, some, it's, it's, so, I said, we talked about an actual project, and that was dealing with ponds and lakes and, and taking action to help clean them up. And what Mr. Ferry pointed out was, the gentleman from Tonton was talking about Sebasha Lake, and we don't have a body of water, fresh water, that size in town, but Tom felt that we would benefit, because if we could get the grant money, it would also apply to streams and rivers, and we do have two smaller rivers that aren't salt until they really get closer to the Tonton River, but it would be helpful, so, but again, I said to them, but before you could apply for that, we don't even know where everyone is, so. She was going to draft the proposal as an introduction, and she knew who to give it to, and they will look at it and determine whether or not something like that, that audit or assessment of all of our communities, is something that could be funded. The engineering firm that's done this kind of work in other communities felt that was a good way to go, because it, it's your initial groundwork, so everyone, you know where everyone is. And, and also, because there were only three of us there, we may find out when that assessment's done, there's something else that might be the second project, or the grant money for the second year. So, it, as we, we were joking, I says, this sounds like when you're planning a master's thesis, you have an advisor, and you put it down, and you talk to him, and you go back, and you go back, and finally, they approve your subject, and you write the first paragraph, and they say, this looks great, now do it over again. And I says, you write and rewrite, but this person that she will give this initial introduction to, of what we are thinking about, will be able to advise her whether or not that's a likely topic that will get funded, so that's where we will, if for some reason that is not, felt that that's going to attract the, the kind of money we're looking for, then we'll have to come up with another proposal, but since there isn't a formal coalition that has done anything yet, we, this is going to be our first step, so even if we don't get the grant money, I think we're going to have to somehow do this. So, anyhow, that was, that's how it was left, and she will be in touch with us to set up another meeting, once we find out if, if it looks like we need to continue on that route to get money to do that this year, and then we'll determine what the project will be next year.
Thank you for attending that.
Yeah, yeah.
And thanks to Tom for attending that as well.
I also have reported, the Dyton School Building Study Committee has been meeting many, many times since January to try and come up with a solution to the overcrowding that's going to occur at the elementary school in particular this fall. What's developed is, is immediate need for, for more classrooms over there by September 1st, and this committee has, has done a tremendous job, and done a tremendous amount of work in a very short time, but that- But that really, that, that need for September is really not in their purview. That really is an issue between the town, probably the Board of Selectmen Finance Committee, and the residents, and the school committee, and superintendent. So what they have done is they've made a recommendation, and I'm bringing it here, to suspend their, their meetings and to suspend their, suspend their work until they get a clearer charge from the Board of Selectmen going forward. So the, my intent will be to get with this board and also get with the superintendent in the school committee and kind of refine that charge, because it was very uncomfortable starting, because, you know, we're not experts on what you need in a school, so. But I wanna recognize this committee. Jesse Beerman's the chair, Rachel Dingus, who's also on the school committee, Daniel Ajou, Robert Rendon, and Ashley Follen. And they have, I'm an ad hoc member. They've done a tremendous amount of work, and a tremendous amount, they found a whole lot of stuff, so. The immediate need we have for September is to get some temporary classrooms over there. Dr. Azar and the school committee is gonna meet next Thursday, and they will give us a formal recommendation of what they need to, in the fall. There's a bunch of questions we still have, and so we'll have to figure out how to deal with that to get it here September 1st. We may have to call a special town meeting, but we'll let you know more about that. But we're on top of the need, and, okay?
I just wanted to add, in case anybody missed that presentation by the committee that they came to our meeting, that was January 31st, if you want to check that out, maybe towards the middle of the meeting.
Yeah.
If you wanted, it was very informative.
Okay, now I think we can do the warrants.
We don't have any minutes?
No.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant 34A-18 in the amount of seventy-nine thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars and one cent payroll. 34B-18 in the amount of seventeen thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy-two cents payroll. And 34C-18 in the amount of two hundred seventy-three thousand eighty-five dollars and seventy-one cents that comes payable, be approved.
I'll step down a second there. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I wanna go back to my report a little bit, one thing I've got. This school, school study committee will be, is looking at a more long-term solution to the problems of, maybe neighborhood actions and stuff, so. So a short-term solution will be by Board of Selectmen and the school committee. The longer-term selection will come, probably come from recommendations that you... Okay, I am, we are gonna, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy in respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. So the chair so declares.
I'll, I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll step down in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We will not be going into, back into open session at the end, so.
We'll call.
Oh, yeah, we'll call.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, Cable. Thank you, Mr. Borkin.